Evening, the time is 7:04. I'd like to officially call the meeting for your roll call please.
Nelson?
Here.
Liner?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
Flacken?
Here.
Preetus?
Here.
Forrest?
Here, and decorum is present. We do not have any audience members who have signed up, so we will keep moving. And our first item, which is obviously one of our favorites, recognition for above the Yon winners.
All right, thank you so much. So we have three winners this evening, two recognized. First, I'm going to ask Mrs. Valerie Pasco to come on down and join me up here. All right, so Mrs. Pasco, stay up here, stay up here. All right, Mrs. Pasco's dedication to excellence in teaching music to the students of Western Avenue deserves recognition. She brings a tremendous amount of energy to every teaching session, after-school and recess-practice sessions with musical and choir students. Speaking of concerts, Mrs. Pasco puts on such amazing concerts where the students are so proud to show off their talents to their school and families. Such a confidence booster for them. She is a leader in local music educator groups and prepares students for choir, ILMEA, sing-alongs, and famous Western Avenue musicals. Speaking of the musical, Mrs. Pasco is also excellent at recruiting parents to help create the wonderful background from the stage. The amount of time and devotion given to the students is amazing. Mrs. Pasco was nominated by Karen Keatlin and Avery Chung and Jessica Bill. Congratulations, Valerie. Our second recognition is for Christina Bolenbacher. Mrs. Bolenbacher creates such a loving and warm classroom environment, which allows her students to be at ease and allows them to perform at their highest level. She sets expectations and encourages her students to achieve success in all aspects. Her love and dedication to her students is evident in all that she does. A piece of her goes forward with every student who has walked through her doors. Christina was recognized by Christina and Chad Leestra. And last recognition is not for a D-161 employee, but somebody that does come across our kids and we felt that this person definitely needs recognition. As for Mrs. Shalina Williams, who's one of our host directors.
Shalina.
She's the main event coordinator.
All right, so accept that. All right, well, thank you very much. Oh, I'll read her now. This is, uh, Ms. Williams is so kind and always looking out for our students' safety. She's always cautious in her route, looking out for cars that might not be stopping for the bus, always waiting a few extra seconds to make sure kids make it safely across the street or to their house. It is clear that she treats the children as her own, making sure her babies are always safe.
There's she is.
All right. Well, I was just in the process of reading her now, because we're going to start over. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Scotty.
All right. So, Ms. Williams is so kind and always looking out for our students' safety. She's always cautious in her route, looking out for cars that might not be stopping for the bus, always waiting a few extra seconds to make sure kids make it safely across the street or to their house. It is clear that she treats the children as her own, making sure her babies are always safe. If parents aren't at the bus stop, she always gives a little tap on her horn, as if to say, "I picked up your baby," or "I just dropped off your baby." The kids love her too, as she always remembers them on special days like Halloween and birthdays. She even remembers younger siblings who might not be in school yet, or gives the younger siblings a shout-out at the bus stop. She really is a wonderful and caring person. Ms. Williams has definitely earned our trust with our kids. Ms. Williams was nominated by Karen Keatlin and Avery Chung and Parker Carroll. Do you have all of our winners come on up?
Yeah, yeah, very good, very good. Oh, no way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mommy, you were in the middle.
Was in the middle.
Just thank you to all of our above the Yon winners I was saying, Ms. Williams. She and I, she's actually my first bus route to the district once, and she won a road class on the first day of 2017 school year, and she took me around, and we had a good time. And I can tell you, the way that, you know, the Chunks kind of described it, where you should talk to our kids, works with our kids, is actually good. And so it's just nice to be able to recognize someone who's so important to the functioning of our school district, along with two other amazing staff members. I mean, you couldn't ask for two better instructors than Val and Christina. We're so lucky to have them as part of our team. Ben and Christine Clas, we've been to one of Val's performances. You understand, the level of instruction and service that they provide to our kids is not typical. It's absolutely extraordinary, and I'm certainly thankful for you all. So, congratulations tonight. We really appreciate it, how hard it worked for us.
I have some amazing things about you, so I want to give to our district. And Mrs. Pasco, how long have you been in the district for now?
Seventeen or eighteen, eighteen years.
So let me tell you, all four of my kids have had Mrs. Pasco. And my oldest is now getting ready to graduate from high school, and they remember all of their songs.
They do.
I'm telling you, you have to live through it. I think that we know how amazing our classroom teachers are, and our music and our art teachers are mean. My first grader is the happiest first grader in the world when he gets to come home after he has seen you. So, thank you. Okay, Parker Junior High, Team Bully Free Forever.
Sure, we don't have any excuse, but we certainly want to recognize the accomplishment. Parker Junior High School is Team Bully Free Forever, Team BFF, focuses on projects and strategies to stop bullying. Parker Junior High recently won the Tiness Champions Award as part of the Pacer National Students with Solutions contest. The student video project was a collaboration between Team BFF and the Blue and Gold Broadcast Club. Pacer will gift Parker with a great buddy bench, and we'll install that later this spring. So, congratulations, student partner.
Okay, to me, your first one is the only one to the Equity and Inclusion Committee.
Yeah, okay, our most recent meeting was on February 24th, 26 to 7 p.m. Good year came out, we agreed our recent diversity dinner, talked generally about some team goals, really focused on our next step, so we're all kind of going out, gathering information, specifically on the audits. I've reached out to Great Lakes Equity Assistance Center, a couple of other individuals who may be able to conduct the audit work, so we can hear back from them once we have some information. Our next plan is to come back with actual proposals for the Equity Inclusion Team to look at and determine our path forward. We need to tie up our Equity Audit, our professional development for next year, and just put those goals in place now that it'll be in relation to the strategic plan we have to achieve. Anything else, committee members, or what?
Do you have to decide on what else we're doing this year? That's next, right?
Well, we wanted to have another evening event, to focus on, to focus on behavior in general, kind of tie in what we've done in the past, because we have had a large push on the sort of practices. We've just gotten away from that as a limitation, so change and initiatives and people and all those. So we want to talk about SB 100 in relation to discipline and equity, which is what that means in our schools, which is an initial kickoff. That also shares some information with what we actually became today about a four-day training that's all summer, that really hits on the historic practices of the organization, just what that student justice pathway looks like, so that we're just going to look at it as well. We need to monitor, and we need a training pathway and partner, so when you can come in and work with us, just do the initial training, but, you know, four months later, now that it's tough and this wonderful piece of the lid I thought I was going to use to build the sort of practices in our classroom isn't working. So, we need to find, you know, a consultant that's able to promote.
I must use a statement that's more sort of a form of question. I still don't, I'm still not confident that committee is grasping, because of the scope of what Equity Inclusion is, the different conditions it grasps, kind of what we're really kind of working with, and I think that that's something that we need to really try to craft, whether that's through the, as you brought up, which kind of, I think, does speak to dealing with races or racial justice in school and for classroom and more with the teachers. But then, for me, I think what we struggle with is words like community, and community is its own perspective, or what I did, not all that, with the strategic plan, I don't know how we're going to do that.
Good question. And I think that's one that we can, I think that's that question we can use with our partners and say, so where is the nexus between the village and the district, or 153 in our district? Because we are working, or HFT, we're all working on the same general topic, we may look a little bit differently. But I like the question that's focused on, okay, you know, our little ecosystem, what does it mean outside of that, and how do we leverage our partners?
So your question focuses more on the inclusion part?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, maybe there's an opportunity to have, really the village in to the conversation. The question says they've been focused as well on Equity Inclusion. So maybe the next meeting should, maybe the next meeting.
To the Lord's credit, Allison and Bridgette and Gray, with their time, we've had a lot of conversations with these, we've also had conversations with 153 specifically, because they're, they were doing the seed projects before, and Dale and his team are looking for them, so I can share our initial then, and so I can be our sharing client.
So when is the next meeting scheduled?
We have not set that, we want to get the actual proposals first. So I would say similar to the next year, I guess, right after September.
Any other questions or comments? Superintendent?
Certainly, well, despite the orgasm weather today, we're off to a really nice start of District 161. I think we did lose our couple of teachers and community members who were here for the board meeting after joining us for the Science Parade, but I'm glad we had a nice crowd for that event. It's always a great showcase for our potential science materials, it's nice to get feedback, obviously from our teachers, that's probably the most important. But our parents are critical partners in all this work, and so it's really nice that they have an opportunity to come in, take a look, ask some questions, and let us know what they think. Our next Learning and Instruction Committee meeting will share some presentations and information with that group, and then they'll determine how we, whether or not we make recommendations to the full Board of Education for adoption. Not focused on curriculum necessarily, but also certainly dominating all of our conversations right now is the coronavirus. As a district, we're reviewing our plans, we want to be able to respond quickly and quickly, and I think that's the key. We don't want to confuse action with productivity, just respond. So, we're trying to be very thoughtful and deliberate in all of our conversations, we are in-house, we're with administrators, and Scott and his team, our district nurse, Kett, we come out, et cetera. But, uh, we are keeping our finger on the pulse of the Center for Disease Control and Department of Public Health, Kett, we have been in contact with them, she's cultivated some connections there, so she has someone she can call directly, which is very nice. And I think reassuring to her, she is, to her credit, my sense of her, very professional, very thorough, I feel very comfortable with her assessments on this situation. We didn't need, last week, to review our plans for hospital pandemic or epidemic, and there's still frankly more conversations to be had. We've not been notified of any local coronavirus cases, but we'll continue our increased protocol protocols, and we're really just going to focus on common sense, personal hygiene, washing hands, calling into sleeves, just being sensible, you know, about how we interact with someone safely, in the state of mind. But we're taking all of this very seriously, and we don't, do not want to be caught flat-footed by this event. So, we will probably react with more caution than estimate, but if it comes, if it's between keeping our kids and parents and staff members safe, there's nothing that we can do. We are monitoring some of the closures that happened, you know, we had a couple today, I think Loyola University closed for a week, or just for Chicago, that shut for a couple of weeks. We're not prepared. And when I say we're not prepared for that, we can absolutely go close, there's no protocol that we have in place to educate students outside of school for several weeks, it's just a thing that we all dream of. So, we're trying to figure out what can we do to make sure that we can try to value as much of that time as possible, but there's nothing that will replace an effective teacher with a human being sitting in front of a group of students. So, what we may try to mitigate, if something happens, when we have to close, try to figure out that closure, I don't anticipate that it will be nearly as valuable as students sitting in class, so we'll just figure out just what that means in the time of our school year, if something happens. Just a couple of questions, if you and third quarter does come to a close, believe it or not, the school year is starting to accelerate, and then I will also be in Springfield through Thursday through Saturday, when I second last official curriculum session. So, maybe phone, text, or email are probably the easiest, but the answer I'm at for.
Any questions or comments?
Yes. Good question. So, with the virus in light of the ever-changing situation that happens or orders by teachers in this century, the one that, I guess I want to ask, I don't know if it's something that you've been prepared for, but when it comes to large events where, such like the daughter dance, or the, like I said, my program, where there's a large gathering of people that are, 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 and one presented, is there anything we can consider, whether the whole, postponed, I mean, again, there's no, what, what the next one?
I just, based on feedback from the Department of Public Health, maybe we've had a few, we've had adults who've maybe had a tertiary passing with someone who has had coronavirus, but we've not had to keep them out. On the direction from the O S A Board of Education is not to, we don't have the, the power to quarantine anyone, and they don't recommend it yet. So, again, we're just, it's in common sense, we're actually talking about some conferences that we can cancel, et cetera. I think it's just make the best decision for that situation. If we do have another, a large gathering, I think we would take a look at the county, we would take a look at our local information, and certainly not off the table.
My question goes more towards the I R testing. When is that scheduled for?
Well, it's under I R, I R N now.
Yes, when, when we start those?
Yes, so I R starts right after spring break.
So in the event that something were to occur, we have to shut down, how does that affect the state testing?
Yeah, I said, yeah. They just said, again, we should make common sense decisions that protect students' issues. I think they're very, the tone of the letter made me think that they clearly understand the situation the districts are in, and as those tough decisions come down, the state will have a risk.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll keep moving. Can I motion please to approve the consent agenda, including the 20, 07 personnel report, minutes from the February 10th, 14th, and 15th meeting, payroll for the month of February, employee request, and the 2020, 2021, or meeting dates? Any other motions? So, texting and Carolyn, any questions or comments? Roll call please.
Greg?
Yes.
Preetus?
Yes.
Flacken?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes.
And the motion is passed. Can I motion please to approve the resolution for abatement to receive the progress actually in the grant?
So, second. Any questions or comments?
Just one comment, that I, it is a very loose relationship with. We did receive $5,000 in the school maintenance fund grant, which is kind of connected to this. It'll put that towards our summer construction, as we know, so that that's free money that we're not spending, but that also allows us to pay taxes to the taxpayer.
Roll call please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Flacken?
Yes.
Preetus?
Yes.
Preetus?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Can I motion to approve the revised policies as listed, there are a lot of them, I'm not saying on, but I do need a motion. Yes, can I motion to approve the revised policy presented in your board action? So, second. Questions or comments about any of the revised policies? All right. Roll call please.
Liner?
Yes.
Preetus?
Yes.
Flacken?
Yes.
Preetus?
Yes.
And the motion is passed. Can I motion please to approve the resolution for abatement to receive the progress actually in the grant? So, second. Any questions or comments?
Just one comment, that I, it is a very loose relationship with. We did receive $5,000 in the school maintenance fund grant, which is kind of connected to this. It'll put that towards our summer constructions, as we know, so that that's free money that we're not spending, but that also allows us to pay taxes to the taxpayer.
Roll call please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Flacken?
Yes.
Preetus?
Yes.
Preetus?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Can I motion to approve the elimination of the instructional fees for the 2020, 2021 school year, and keep all other fees the same as the 2019, 2020 school year? So, second. Any questions or comments? Roll call please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Flacken?
Yes.
Preetus?
Yes.
Preetus?
Yes.
Preetus?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Can I motion to approve the revised policies as listed, there are a lot of them, I'm not saying on, but I do need a motion. Yes, can I motion to approve the revised policy presented in your board action? So, second. Questions or comments about any of the revised policies? All right. Roll call please.
Liner?
Yes.
Preetus?
Yes.
Flacken?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Preetus?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Can I motion to repeal policy 5122? So move, second. Questions or comments?
Can we just, a quick reminder of what, why it's no longer necessary?
We just don't have to have, this is the, remember, this is the two-year policy, we just don't have a format for it no longer.
Okay. Roll call please.
Flacken?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Liner?
Yes.
Preetus?
Yes.
Preetus?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Can I motion to approve the District 161 strategic plan? Is this a small idea? Any second. Questions or comments?
I would say this is the culmination of a lot of work by community members, board members, administrators, teachers, to really focus our work for the next five years, in a number of different drafts and revisions have been worked through, so that we have a very simple, measurable, rigorous plan. With the approval tonight, the district departments will go off and begin drafting department plans that will, kind of hold up the strategic plan, school improvement plans will come directly from that, both of those plans, or sets of plans, will come to the board for review and an alignment check. And then the other work that will happen from the district leadership team is indicators to measure this plan, and so we'll have those in place before FY '20 is over. So that when we start next year, we have a new strategic plan, we've agreed about how we're going to measure that, we've got department plans that will take us 12 months down the road for our implementation, we have school improvement plans that clearly understand and underpin the expectations from board at the classroom level. So when you think about alignment, the work that we're doing that has been done, that will happen over the next four months, gives us the best opportunity for continued success.
I might add that we will also have superintendent of that, for the strategic plan.
And if I may, would just like to say, again, how grateful we are to members of community for helping create this as a collaborative effort, and those who showed up in this room a number of times, but also those responding to surveys and who chimed in as best they could, because this is definitely a reflection of the community. The community was, it was really in the forefront of our minds the entire time as we move through the next five years. I am personally very excited about this, and again, also thrilled by the wonderful people I've worked with, and they're really fantastic practitioners, and I see this very openly and honestly, thank you all, and I am really looking forward to this, especially as we follow in coming years, because this is a living life.
But how will this get rolled out to, taken on that?
C E C is working on that.
Okay.
So, we're working with Katie Sullivan, who was a member on our group logo, she has been working with Amy Kent since December, which is trying to, it's just a lot of information. But, then we'll bring that back to C E C, we're waiting on tonight, we want to get through the approval, come back to the Community Engagement Committee with some mockups, have them punch that up, and then move forward for planning a building event, to kind of dip our toe in the water of, we want to bring more people in, let's just keep it small but focused, and have a real strong reason, we could rule this out and say, hey, here's our new strategic plan, and also, these are the four things we really wanted to highlight if we're selling incredible houses in the home of Los Muay area, in Chicago Heights, District 161, and we want to be built in District 161. So, it's going to accomplish double things. That focus piece will be our marketing department, here's our story, let us help you tell it, but we'll also use that as our springboard, and of course, we'll send these out, we'll do the mail, we'll do all those things, but the feedback from that issue will roll out and helps us.
Any other questions? Roll call please.
Preetus?
Yes.
Liner?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Preetus?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Can I motion to approve the resolution to reemploy the first, second, and third-year probationary teachers as presented? So, second. Any questions or comments? Roll call please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Liner?
Yes.
Flacken?
Yes.
Preetus?
Yes.
Preetus?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Can I motion to approve the resolution to reemploy and grant tenure to the teachers who have successfully completed before-year probationary period as provided by Illinois School Code? The tenure will take effect on the first day of the 2020, 2021 school term. Any questions or comments? Roll call please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Liner?
Yes.
Preetus?
Yes.
Flacken?
Yes.
Preetus?
Yes.
And the motion is passed.
On behalf of the board, I would like to personally and collectively thank the attending teachers for their tremendous professional quality and value they brought for our district, and to tell you how truly grateful you are that you are part of us, our families, and our community. and, uh, and tell you how truly grateful you are that you are part of us, our families, uh, and our community, and, uh, we look forward to, um, trusting our children with the use of the table. Thank you very much. As always, tenure teachers, new tenure teachers, and everyone else. Great job, thanks.
Thank you.
And then, thank you, Steve, for really saying things about those tenure teachers, and the things that we did also. Uh, we made a few shifts at the start of last year. We shifted on some of our recognitions, especially on timelines at the beginning of the year, really focusing on our tenure teachers in the 10, 15, 20, et cetera. Because to me, it was really important that our new staff members got to see, this is what happens. Alright, we are committed to these people. When you hit that fourth year, we're going to celebrate, you're going to really make a good deal. So just like this year, at the start of next year, we'll recognize all of our people for longevity, and, uh, we will make that very special soon.
I do that, right, CEC? I have a motion to approve the resolution to dismiss the first, second, or third year probationary teachers as presented. So, second, any questions? Roll call, please.
Greg?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Please Stroud?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes, and the motion has passed. Can I have a motion, please, to move to executive session to discuss matters relating to litigation, matters relating to collective bargaining, matters relating to student discipline, matters relating to personnel. All in favor of the ad?
Aye.
All opposed, aye? Yeah, it's had this, we have no other acting items to be made.
Bye everyone, thanks for coming, we're.